Hey Beth.
Hi. I'm gonna give it a couple of minutes because we still have people joining a lot. Okay. It looks like the sudden ad is done, so I'm going to get this meeting started. It is 6:02 PM. Let's start with the superintendent's reports or superintendent report for tonight.
Thank you. It's brief because we already did many of these issues the other night at the SAU meeting. The only thing pertaining to Amherst is just wanted to confirm something that the Mount Vernon Board asked me to double check with the Amherst Board regarding the students being tuitioned to the Mount Vernon Village School. So those students are going to continue into second grade next year, and there are a couple of younger siblings that will be starting in kindergarten. So there'll be five total students being tuitioned to the Mount Vernon Village School next year per the Board's motions on both sides from last year. So I just wanted to make sure this Board, I just wanted to report that to this Board and make sure they were still aware that we're continuing with that process. So that's it.
Okay. Adam, do you have anybody waiting? Over there? No, I don't either. I've, I was just notified that some people are getting the waiting for host. I think, or acknowledgement?
No, we've got several people from the community logged in as well.
Okay, let's, um. Okay, so I am going to move on. We have, do any board members have committee updates? I do have an update waiting for the I'm sorry, I have somebody from the JFAC that's gonna be giving an update, but they're not in yet, and they're not waiting. So I think we're gonna round back to never mind, here she comes, hold on. So Shannon's got an update for us from the Joint Facilities Committee. So we'll wait for her to connect and then she can give it right away. Shannon, if you're, if you can hear me yet, we're actually gonna be starting with you giving me, giving us the joint facilities update.
Sure, yeah, hi.
How's it going? I'm sorry, I'm having a little technical challenges tonight. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I think everyone at this meeting was at the SAU meeting on Monday night for the most part. So I don't have much beyond what we shared at the meeting, but if there are any additional questions, I'm happy to field those for the Board.
Shannon, just for any community member that might be watching this live stream or anything like that, if they have questions for the committee themselves, should they be reaching out to Amy Facy?
Yeah, they can either email Amy Facy and she is afacy@, I'm not sure if she's a surprise or
She's surprised.
She's surprised. Or I'm also happy to accept any questions as the Vice Chair, and I'm sgascline@sa39.org.
Thank you.
And we've updated the SAU 39 website under the Committees tab. There's a tab that says Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. That tab also includes the presentation that was given to the SAU Board on, earlier in the week, for anyone from the public who wants to look there. We've also, we have it on a Facebook page as well, if that's more accessible for some folks out in the community.
Okay, thank you very much. Josh, I saw you raise your hand.
It was just to mention the Facebook page that just went up. That was all.
Got it. Okay.
I'm sorry, Beth, so I'll just plug the, in the upcoming weeks, we'll be surveying the community as well to get some community input regarding the state of our facilities in the Amherst School District. So the pre-K to eighth grade buildings, Clark Wilkins and Amherst Middle School. So that was probably one of the big takeaways from, from earlier in the week was that that is upcoming in the next couple of weeks. So we'll share that out in a variety of ways on the SAU website, through social media, in the Citizen, all of those places. And the Board will, will see those survey questions as well.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Does the Board have any other questions for Shannon? No, we had a big chance last time. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on, we are not gonna be doing the principals for, oh, sorry, moving on to public comment. Do we have any comments from the public? Feel free to raise your hand in the participant panel so I can see you easier. Okay, seeing none. We're not gonna be doing the principals report tonight because they had, they gave their reports on Monday, so we, Adam was nice enough to give them the night off. But you can definitely look at the SAU meeting that was recorded if you're interested in their updates. It includes all of our principals from all of our buildings across the SAU, including Mount Vernon and Sohegan. So moving on to the consent agenda, I would like to acknowledge the fact that we will be approving new hires, the minute, the draft minutes from our last three meetings, the treasures report, some unanticipated revenue. I'd like to especially thank the PTA for their grants for the eighth, some eighth grade science equipment. Looking at those, those are really exciting, so thank you. And then we also have the New Hampshire Department of Education, Department of Education General Assurances Form that needs to get approved every year, signed off on every year, Adam? Is that correct? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
You nodded. And then we also have some policies that we are approving. It is DAF, IJL slash KEC and JIJC that we've already gone through, through the SAU as well as our Board for the first read. So can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second, there you go.
Ellen first, Josh seconded. Can I roll a call? We'll start with Ellen.
Grudge and yes.
Josh?
Uncle and yes.
Tom?
Theory yes.
Terry?
Him yes.
You, oh, Kuzma, yes. Okay. I printed out the agenda this time, make it easier to make sure I'm not missing anything. Um, moving on to the first reading of some policies. The first one that we're gonna acknowledge is policy JL CJ, which is the concussion head injury. This is our first official read, even though we've looked at it several times before. This is our first official read. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that one? Okay, so we'll be moving that on for the consent agenda at our next meeting. The next one is our policy IJOC, which is our volunteer policy. We did a lot of work on the volunteer policy. This policy has not gone through the SAU first because it was, it's kind of more of a time sensitive thing and going through that process, and it's more specific to us and our, how we work versus the other ones, although the SAU will have a chance to look at it if they'd like to. But earlier in the year, we had some members of the PTA reach out with some concern over our current volunteer policy. So we spent a lot of time working on it this year, discussing what we find what we need to have in a volunteer policy to make our students safe. So we've broken out the types of guests slash volunteers that we would have in our building into three different groups, which would have three different levels of understanding of what they are, oversight and things like that. So it was included as part of the packet. Our Board has looked at it extensively, so I don't think they have many questions on it. I could be wrong, but I am gonna actually open this topic up to public. If you guys, if any members of the public would like to ask any questions specifically about it, feel free to please use your, raise your hand feature. That'd be great. Adam, you have a question?
I do. Really just more of a compliment. So I just want to commend the Board. One of your critical roles is in policy development, and I'm really impressed with what this Board did in taking what was a hot button issue several months ago, hearing from the public and going through a very systematic process to weigh and balance the respective needs of the community with safety and all of those things in between. And the Board has heard far ranging opinions on what this policy ought to be. Have you not? Yes, you have. You've heard far ranging opinions on this, and I think you found, struck the right balance between doing what's best for students, keeping things manageable at the administrative level, and getting a policy that reflects the interests of the community. So the Board should be acknowledged for that good work.
Thank you, Adam. Victoria?
Hi, Victoria Pracy. I live here in Amherst. I feel like this is more official than, than just the Zoom, the Zoom statement. I am the current PTA President with my term ending here in a few weeks, but I just want to thank the Board for moving forward on this, creating a concrete policy that allows our volunteers to know what parameters they're working within and makes it safest for our students. If you guys want to connect with us, I know we have our PTA liaisons on your school board, so feel free to reach out to us after this so we can get things moving for whenever the right time is for us to be back in school. Thank you.
Um, Victoria, you actually made me remember some other things I wanted to make sure I mentioned tonight. With some of the reasons that we came up with the different delineations that we did, we have some volunteers that spend a lot of time in our building, which is amazing and we're so thankful for them. They, we had some concerns that there's not, they become a part of the family, the building family. So they tend to, we want to make sure that they don't slip through the cracks and that they're safe for our kids. Additionally, we did keep a lot of thought with the PTA of how to keep them as a part of this and help us move forward. This is definitely not a, removing them and making it impossible for the PTA to help us have volunteers because we value them so much. So we really wanted to work with you guys on how we can really use you to still work through this process and still have you guys help us with our volunteers, so.
Yeah, no, we're excited too. I know that, you know, in the last several years, we've done all different things from having people sign off on a privacy policy and making sure that we're in connection with all of the school administration to, you know, make sure that everything's flowing smoothly and taking feedback and rolling as we go. So, you know, we're, we're happy to work with you guys.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments from the public on this policy? Okay, so we want to make sure this policy is signed off on before, way before school starts, so that everybody's aware and we can keep moving forward. So we're discussing having a meeting, just throwing in another meeting, probably at the end of the month just so we don't have to meet in July, just to approve this policy so we can get it going and make it official, because we have to do a first read and a second read, so that the community is aware of that. All right, moving forward, we have the Rec Department proposal. Adam, can, would you mind?
Happy to, yeah. So the, the Amherst Selectmen, on behalf, through the Amherst Rec Department, are asking for our approval to put lights up on our field in September and October. There's a memo in our packet that describes the reason for that, that move. We support it on our end and would be happy to answer any questions. And I also see that our Selectmen's Representative, John DeAngelo, was in the meeting, who might be called on in a pinch to answer questions on behalf of the Selectmen.
Do I have any board members that have any questions about this? Um. Terry?
I was trying to remember, what are you, so my, I know that lights have been, they've been an issue in the past, and there's a reason there aren't permanent lights on a couple of locations. So is it part of the proposal that they'll only be on for certain hours and that they'll definitely be turned off? Because I'm absolutely for them. I think it opens up a lot and lets scheduled practices happen and the older kids can go later, and it's all a good thing. But I just want to make sure that we have that built in, that there's a limit on how long they're on and that they're off by a certain time.
They'll be off every night by 8:30, as Craig has indicated.
Okay, so thank you. Just wanted to highlight that, and otherwise, I, I'm excited for it. I think it's a great option.
Um. Do I have any other questions from the Board?
The only thing that I had was in the, in the comments section on the proposal that the Selectmen suggested that we open it up to public opinion. I guess maybe this is a question for John, or he can give us the thinking behind that. If it's a, you know, if it's behind the school, if it's enclosed and if it is off by 8:30 every night, what was the thinking behind trying to seek extra guidance beyond the school board?
John, feel?
Yeah. About five years ago, there was a proposal for temporary lighting on the bean fields. And again, Rec came to the Amherst School Board, and there was a certain amount of controversy around that. So the school board said, let's see a demo. So Peg Bennett, who was then the Chair, and I, who's on the Select Board, went and watched the demo, and it looked perfectly acceptable to us. So it came back and the Amherst School Board gave the Selectmen permission to put temporary lights on the bean field. But because the opposition from the neighbors was so intense, the applicant, the soccer club, decided not to do it. So in theory, we still had permission to put the lights, temporary lights in the bean field, but they're not, nobody's asking us to do that. The request for this field was because it's the most sheltered from neighbors field that we have access to. And the intent is to try and get some of the lost practice time from the spring made up in the fall by having the ability to run kids out there until 8:30 at night. The question came up in the Selectmen's meeting whether or not you wanted to have a public hearing to get public input on whether this is a good idea, or you just want to do it and see how it works. Last time around, I think you had a public hearing and you got lots of input saying, don't do that, don't do that. And then you did it anyway. You, the Board, did it anyway. So whether you want to go that route this time or not is up to you. I mean, it's a one-year trial, see how it works. We don't know whether your, the Facilities Committee's gonna recommend building another school on that field, so we don't want to do anything permanent. But if this works well on a temporary basis and the field is available full-time, you might want to consider having a conversation about putting some permanent lighting on there. As we discovered five years ago, that temporary lighting actually has more of a light bleed to the neighbors than permanent lighting does. Permanently installed lighting is set so that almost none of the light escapes the field, whereas temporary lighting, it's less contained. But anyway, that was the, the thinking behind suggesting you might want to get public input on this. My guess is the public input will be mostly negative, but it's up to you.
Thank you.
Um, do you know if there's any concerns just because of where Wilkins is part of, is kind of into the historic district, or is actually part of the historic district, isn't it?
I think so.
So are there any concerns about that?
Nobody expressed any concerns about that. I think Will was at the meeting, but I mean, I'm sure if somebody has concerns, they will get the hold of you. The question is, do you want to do that after you've given permission to do it, or do you want to have a notice, public hearing where you discuss the matter and then make a decision?
I think it would be more of a concern, just purely from, from my standpoint in this. I think it'd be more of a concern if we were building permanent lighting back there, being that it's temporary. I think there'd be less of a concern historically if it's only for the, for the next six months through October, and then, you know, we take them down and then we try it again next spring, or have a, you know, another discussion next spring about whatever we're gonna do, or whatever, you know, whatever school building projects might come up in that time. So my opinion is, I, I'm, I'm fine with it. I think that's a shelter to field as you're gonna get. You can't see that field when you're running by on Jones Road. You really can't see the field when you're behind the high school. The lights aren't gonna extend much above the high school, if at all. I, I, I think that it's a fairly innocuous proposal, and if they're gonna pay for it and carry all the liability on it, and as long as that's the case, then I think that, you know, I think we'd be, you know, I'd be fine with that, as long as the liability is on them for, you know, God forbid a light tower falls down or something.
My understanding is that the liability does go with Rec.
Ellen?
Yeah, it mentions in the letter that the lights will be fenced off. I guess I'd suggest that our new facilities person investigates that and approves that fencing, because certainly a light falling at night when the kids are playing soccer is a concern, but that field is also being used during the day at Wilkins, and potentially maybe more, considering our return to school may, may demand some more outside time. So I would just suggest that that goes on the agenda for the facilities manager to make sure that the kids can access and, you know, in his opinion, the faces, the fences are safe.
Um, my underst standing with the fences is more so the kids can't climb on it, not necessarily to prevent them from, you know, like if it, it wouldn't fence off an area where it would potentially fall.
But they can be lowered, according to the letter, pretty easily, so they can go up and down. So I think, again, just having the facilities person, whoever's gonna be in charge of that process, making sure that when they're lowered, they're not a risk anymore. If they're, if they're, you know, just a stable ground structure at that point, then we wouldn't have an issue.
I agree. And generally, regardless of, you know, how they can access it and what they can do once they access it, I think I would feel better knowing that even though the liability isn't on us, certainly the safety expectation would be. So our facilities people work closely with the installation of those fences, to be sure that they are safe, in our opinion, not just theirs.
Um, do, John, do you have a thought? I saw you go left. I saw you.
I don't have a thought. I mean, Craig works very well with the facilities people at all the schools, or when he does stuff on the fields. Everybody wants it to be safe. Everybody wants it to be proof against little fingers getting into it. The lights can be lowered pretty easily. We're not running a diesel generator this time. Five years ago we were, and one of the complaints was noise. We're looking to run a propane generator this year, and it's almost silent. Certainly, once you're off the field, it's pretty much inaudible. So I, I think it's a relatively safe, low-risk way to try it out and see if we like it.
Um, do you know if, so are they gonna rent them the first year? Are they gonna flat out buy them? So if we go through the two months and decide it's not a doable thing, that they're gonna be
As far as I know, it's a rental.
It says, the letter says rental.
It did, I missed that, thank you. Ellen?
I think it's important to note that it's the Amherst Soccer Club. Is that now through Rec, or is that still a private club? So it's the Amherst, the Amherst Soccer Club has requested from the Recreation Department. So I don't think it's a Recreation Department running the light rental. It would probably be the Amherst Soccer Club.
Yeah, the Amherst Soccer Club would actually pay for the lights. They rent the fields through Recreation, which is why they're approaching Recreation for it.
So in terms of liability, where does that fall, in your opinion, Sean?
Well, anything goes wrong, everybody would get sued. But as far as we can tell, the liability
Who has the most money?
Yeah, the liability would be with the soccer club and the town, whether it's in the schools or through the Selectmen. Would probably get sued as well, but we have liability insurance, so I don't know that we have any real exposure.
Okay. Adam, do you know how the liability for these types of things usually work?
Yep. Part of our agreement with the town, with the Rec, is that they assume liability for the programs that they run. But John's absolutely correct. Whenever something bad happens, we will all get sued.
Right. Okay. All right. Terry, you haven't weighed in. Do you have a thought?
I weighed in. I'm, I'm in support. I think it's a great way. We've looked at it in the past, and this is a nice way to try it in an area where I think it won't be impactful. And that's why I stressed the time it turns off, because I think that any reasonable issue with light pollution, you know, if you're done by 8:30, it's not that bad.
Okay, so do we feel comfortable moving forward with approving it, at least for this coming fall? Because it's only for September and October that they'll go up. And then reassessing after October of if it's something that we want to continue? See nods, okay. I'm assuming we need a motion?
Not necessarily. This, you're not, you're not going against any policy or making any discreet approval, so you can just, by consensus, tell me to work with the Selectmen and have this be approved.
Okay.
Feel free to take a motion if you want. Either, either way is fine.
All right. Um, part of me wonders if we should do a motion. I, I don't, my perspective is I'd like, I think this is a great thing to try for September and October, and then making a more definitive decision of how it worked out for the neighbors and things like that, after that. Seeing, did it affect them and stuff like that, to decide if it's something we'd want to do for future years. So Board, it's up to you if you guys want to make a motion or not.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, what is your motion, Ellen?
My motion is to allow the Amherst Recreation Department to allow the Amherst Soccer Club to have lights on the field in Sept, in the lower Wilkins Field for September and October of 2020.
All right. And Tom seconded, so we're gonna do a roll call. Ellen?
Grudge and yes.
Tom?
God, theory yes.
Josh?
Uncle and yes.
Terry?
Him yes.
Kuzma, yes. Um, and Adam, can we put in a I don't know, something for November to reach out to the neighbors and find out how we can go about, you know, getting feedback from them of how it worked?
Well.
Thank you. Okay. Um. Michelle? I saw you. There you are, when you're hunting for a name. So we are on to the Unassigned Fund Balance and other end-of-year items.
Okay. The Unassigned Fund Balance has gone up slightly, but there's not a major change from, from the number that was shared previously. has gone up slightly, but there's not a major change from, from the number that was shared previously. And I can give you that number again. One, one second here. So the, the report that was previously shared showed that we had on the revenue side, six hundred and fifteen thousand contributing to revenue. And then on the expenditure side at the time was eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, and that might have gone up a little bit since the last reporting. So that was a total of one point four, almost one point five million. And of that, we had projected seven hundred thousand on the MS twenty-six. So if you were to take that out of the total, we can only spend up to the level of the expenditure side anyway. That leaves the eight hundred and fifty-six, a little bit less than that if you stack up the seven hundred thousand.
Um, can you, okay. The six hundred and fifteen thousand is what?
So the revenue side is coming from primarily, but it's based on the comparison of what we budgeted as compared to what we are actually getting. That's what contributes to the, the fund balance. And we have additional revenue in tuition, kindergarten aid, catastrophic aid and Medicaid. So those are the contributors to the, the revenue side.
Okay. And then the other part is just money savings?
Expenditures that, right, where we had budgeted items that we did not fully expense the, the budgeted amount.
So,
so on the expenditure side, you can, you know, keep in mind that we did receive our credit from Butler Bus. We did have a budget freeze at the beginning of this COVID cycle. We had had already some savings in salaries and benefits. So, you know, there are many areas that contribute to the savings on the expenditure side, but given the remote learning, we have had some expenditures that were not anticipated due to the remote nature of, of the teaching. But there were also expenses that we didn't incur, such as, no, we didn't use paper in the facility. You know, people weren't in the facility. And so some of those expenses that would typically happen, didn't happen.
Um, is the plumbing included in that six hundred, the leftover from the AMS plumbing? Which side is that on?
No, because that is a separate article.
Does not include that. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle? Really?
Are we, are we running through the list again, or?
Yeah.
We will, just, I, we-
You mean general questions?
Talk about that. This is more specifically about the rev, the amount we have left over.
Bethel, I have a question.
Yes.
So, um, and because I've been asked this by citizens of Amherst, help, Michelle, I guess this is directed at you, help us understand more. I know you've explained where the savings was, benefits and salaries, COVID-related. It's a lot of money. And people were sort of trying to get more specifics about, you know, why did we have such a big budget when there's so much to give back at the end of the year? Potentially, or use it for maintenance issues. And I didn't quite know how to respond.
Can you rephrase your question again?
So it's, it's, it's a large amount of money.
Yeah.
Um, larger than the two other districts had left over, I believe, significantly more. And so although you've explained where the savings was, it seems though it's quite a bit of money left over after our budget. And so any other reason not consistent with another year other than COVID?
Um, well, I guess, let me try to put it in perspective a little bit. It certainly is a large amount of money. The revenue side, I will traditionally budget conservatively. And, you know, because you don't want to be short on the revenue side. So there are some items such as Medicaid. We had a question as to whether or not we were going to get any Medicaid money.
Okay.
So rather than budget that and be short, you know, we were very conservative with that. So that's an example there. Special Ed is based on what the state approves for catastrophic aid and their allocation and the expenditures from the prior year. So, you know, we are allowed to budget within a range of that, but that's all on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the, the budget is twenty-seven point nine million. So the unexpended portion is still within three percent of that. It is a large dollar amount, but percentage-wise, it's really right in an area that would be reasonable to describe.
Yeah, I think it's, it's valuable to just, for the public to hear those details. I know in the past, that's been a confusing issue for voters. And, and sometimes school boards have been, have sort of been held accountable in, in, I don't want to say an unhealthy way, but sort of, you know, questions have been directed to them after the fact. And the, the questions have been difficult to answer. So I just wanted to make sure that I received clarification, so I'm communicating correctly to people when, when they ask me, and then I will remind them to watch the Zoom meeting, because it is recorded.
I would be very nervous if we were budgeted. You know, we do budget conservatively as, as well on the expenditure side. But if we were right down to the wire and at half a percent at the end of the year, I would not be able to breathe and I would be concerned that we were
Yes.
not providing the appropriate flexibility for the school district to respond to unanticipated needs.
Right.
And to be clear, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Josh. Go ahead.
No, just to be clear, and that's because our budget is hard capped, right? There's no going over it. We cannot borrow. Like, if, if I go over my personal budget, I can go to the bank if I need a car and get a loan. But the school, if at the end of the year, the roof collapses and we need to do something, we can't borrow money.
It is against the law for us to spend a penny over.
There is a hard spot.
So correct me, and I'm just drawing a blank. Are we in a default year? Is this our default year? Yeah, okay. So this is a default year and we still have one point five essentially left over.
But it is very important to differentiate between the expenditure side and the revenue side, because it does sound like a very large number, but you know, half of it's from revenue and the expenditures piece is within a three percent range.
Right, right. And again, that revenue is related to Medicaid and special ed and, yeah, okay.
It's not that we were one point five, it was really six hundred and fifteen thousand.
Right.
Terry, you have had your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I think that the one thing that stuck out to me in that explanation, which was very helpful, thank you, Michelle. And thank you for the question, Ellen. I think it was a good one, is three percent. You would be pretty irresponsible as a homeowner to, to do your monthly budget and not have some kind of cushion, you know, one way or the other. You're always going to have, hopefully, a little bit in there. And so three percent for me in my home budget, you know, might be a couple hundred or, or some small amount, whereas three percent for our district, we're the largest district of the three in the SAU. And so everything is going to go by our three percent is just going to be more than if, you know, Sohegan did the same or if Mount Vernon did the same. And so I think it's really important to point out that most years, at least the years that I've been on the board so far, we don't have this much at the end. We are razor-thin close. And I get really, really nervous. So I'm actually a little relieved to have us ending the year, even if it's under extraordinary circumstances. But I'm kind of relieved to have us ending with a little bit healthier reserve left, because I think it's a better way to go about things, is that you want to have just a little bit there. And so I just want to put it into context that it sounds like a lot. But when you put it into context of what our overall is, it's really not that much.
And if I could just add to that, in, in a typical year, I don't want it to sound as though we budget to have room for contingencies. But in a typical year, if you have something that goes awry, then you have to make those decisions about where you are going to cut your budget internally to accommodate those unanticipated expenditures. And this year, as an example, we had a boiler failure at Clark. And so we're looking at, that's on the list of year-end items. We are either going to repair or replace that. But a full replacement is forty thousand dollars. So sometimes you can have expenses that are unanticipated that are fairly large, too.
Michelle, can you explain the difference between why, when we get Medicaid revenue, that we didn't expect that we cannot spend that, but when we get one ninety-eight twenty B grants or other types of revenue, that we can't spend those? Can you explain that difference?
I can. I'm going to rival Christine's hour-long meeting. I'll try to keep it short. There are lengthy regulations around school district spending authority. And the, the expenditure side, our appropriations are our spending limit. There are exceptions to that rule that will increase our spending limit. And those exceptions come with strings. So something such as a grant, somebody is donating money and they're attaching expectations to that. So it comes with conditions, then that's like a restricted donation or federal funding or state funding that is restricted for a particular purpose will increase your spending authority. It increases your appropriations. But general revenue, if we do a fundraiser that's, that's under the name of the school district or the state gives you additional general revenue, such as the Medicaid revenue that, that comes in, that's not targeted to a specific program and with a specific set of outcomes as part of that revenue, that is just on the revenue side of the equation. It doesn't increase what's called your appropriations or your expenditure side of the equation at all. The grants increase both sides. If you get a hundred thousand dollar grant, you get a hundred thousand in revenue and get a hundred thousand of increased expenditures and you're obligated to spend that money based on the donor's requirements in a scenario of a grant. So these other revenue items that you see that are on there for approval and the consent agenda, they're increasing both the revenue budget and the expenditure budget, where the Medicaid money does not. It only increases the revenue side. Did I make that more confusing for folks or did that make sense?
No.
So we can't spend the Medicaid.
There'll be a test on it, no.
We can't spend the Medicaid. We can't, well, I guess we technically already spent the excess in catastrophic aid. It just means we didn't have to pay as much out of pocket on that. Right?
It's a year lag. So it comes in the year after the expenditures are incurred. So if we project that you're going to get a hundred and fifty in catastrophic aid and you get two hundred thousand back, that you can't spend that additional money. The, the additional money goes to offset the tax rate in the block.
Okay.
When we grant our donation or something like that, then it, then it raises both revenue and expenditures that we can spend. So when the Beth Kuzma Memorial Scholarship Fund is established for with, with a ten million dollar initial donation, we would be able to spend that, because that's a donation that has revenue and an expenditure.
Okay. Um, okay, that makes sense. Okay. Um, so back to the list that we were going over last time, and there was a couple of questions that came in after our meeting of some things that were missing from the list, such as a leaky roof at AMS, the lack of heat in the locker room at AMS. I feel like there was a third, but-
I think those are the two major ones.
Yeah, those were the two big ones. Um, does, so thinking about those two things and then back to the list, Michelle, I know you have some answers on some of them. So I don't know if we should share your screen to look back at the list, just to refresh everybody's memory? If that's all right?
I can do that if that's helpful.
Yeah. Adam, can you grant her permission to share if she doesn't have it already? Thank you.
All right. Can folks see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So some of this we already approved. It looks like you have, no, it's not. It's going to tell me that, so I can't scroll it, but that's okay.
So this is a working document. I'll just forewarn folks that, you know, we've, we've used this list to kind of track where we are in progressing with the items that have been approved to date.
Okay. Um, all right. So we, there's something that we already approved. There's some that we flat out said no to. And then there's some that we had some questions or clarifications on or, you know, what have you regarding these. So, um,
I know, I ran point last time on this. So it should be anything that doesn't have a yes or a no in it. And it probably has a comment on, in column G.
Okay. Um, all right, so-
Is there any way to make the document a little bigger? It's just hard to say for old people.
Um,
Did that work? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the, let me see. Let's look at some. So the, we had, there's, the main breaker was brought up in both of, at AMS and Clark Wilkins. And we had, there was kind of a question as to what the difference was between them and Michelle, do you want to fill the board in on what you told me?
Can I, can I just, sorry, is it Clark or Wilkins or Clark and Wilkins? In terms of this one?
Wilkins.
Okay.
Yeah, because Wilkins has its own section and Clark has its own section.
Okay.
So, okay. Michelle, go ahead.
So one of the items is to replace the main breaker in services switch gear. And another quote on the end, the other building, is to actually replace the switch gear.
So it's-
So they're really two different projects.
Yeah, I see that.
So that's, explains the difference on each. Um, so that, I think the board, we didn't take an official vote on. I think we were kind of trying to figure out, there is a comment, Michelle. Oh, no, I think that was the comment. Um, so we never actually voted on this, on what to do about this particular line. We do know that this is not in the CNA. So, Ellen?
I think we had some confusion about how necessary it was, or if it was just sort of PTSD from what happened at Sohegan.
Yeah.
So maybe Adam can speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, happy to. So I will acknowledge PTSD. And when we talk about single points of failure in our school system, this would be one of the few that we have. So the, this particular breaker is exactly the same as the one at Sohegan. It is very rare for something to, to happen and to go bad this way, but we know it is possible. And at Sohegan, we were looking at the potential for weeks-long loss of use of the building, had we not been able to source a replacement part in the area by a stroke of luck. So it's, I would say it's not something that we have to do. I'm saying it's something that we ought to do, or at least make plans to do in the next couple of years.
All right. Um, so board members, since I can only see four faces and not, they're not all the rest of the board, just feel free, if you've got a thought on this, just feel free to chime in. Especially Josh and Terry, because I can see Ellen and Tom on my screen. So, oh, Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, on the breaker, I think on that one, it was unusual that it went early. I would like us to plan for it. But I don't think we need to. I think we have more pressing things to fix. So I would like to put it on the list for making sure we don't forget about it. So we do it in the next regular budget in the next two or three years. But I wouldn't want to do it right now, when we have more compelling things to do, in my opinion. So that's just my opinion.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, it's kind of where I am on. Yeah, it's kind of where I am on it.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess I can understand that. I guess my question to Adam would be, is this a part that can be ordered, obtained and stored? Or is this the kind of thing where, like, we have to replace it before it breaks?
We can order and store it. The replacement process itself is about a two-day affair where the entire building's electricity service has to be shut off during that time. So you can imagine there are good times for that to happen and there are bad times. A bad time would be when the weather is below freezing and we don't have the ability to keep the pipes warm enough to not burst in the building. A good time would be the summertime. So we'll try to schedule it to break during the summertime, but I can't promise that will happen.
To Josh's point, could you store the piece and then in 2025, if it doesn't break before then, replace it then?
Yep, we we could. It's not, we shouldn't think of it like a piece. So when they replace this one thing, it also replaced all the guts around it as well because all the guts around it are also obsolete. And so it's, it's not even something that you could have stored on a pallet necessarily because it would take up as much room as the thing itself. And there's not storage room to be had for several years. So I'm sorry, Ellen, I'm not answering your question. I can.
No, no, that's fine, Adam. I guess I just had an add-on question. Is there any other benefit other than not having an emergency situation?
There's a minor benefit, and that would be that we would have with the new system, the ability to monitor our electricity usage more carefully because it has built-in monitoring in it that we can actually connect network-wise and monitor in real time. So if we ever wanted, if we got more serious about energy savings and we wanted to track things on a more granular granular level, we would have that ability. But that, I mean, that's a, that's worthwhile, but it's, we're not, there's not going to be energy savings. The circuit breaker itself doesn't save energy by itself.
But I guess the the danger in not doing this, to me, seems like if we end up with it not breaking at a good time, we could end up with a much higher cost of damage to the school if in mid-December this breaks and we can't get a part for two weeks. And like you said, pipes freeze, school's out, and we have real other issues. So my concern in not doing it is that, you know, we set ourselves up for a more potential catastrophic failure. And if it's, I guess the other question is, in upgrading this, would that sort of align with any renovation? So in other words, we don't want to upgrade this. And then if there is a renovation down the line, say, well, we gotta update the electrical system again. Or would this sort of be like, we're updating electrical system and no matter what, that now is off the table?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that for sure. So we would obviously buy the biggest service that we possibly could for that room. Meaning we wouldn't, if it's currently a two thousand amp breaker and we could get away with a three thousand amp in its place, we would probably do the three thousand just to leave room to expand. What I don't know is on the street, there's a transformer. And then from the transformer to that circuit breaker, there are very thick wires. And I'm not sure if those thick wires are big enough or need to be replaced if an upgrade came along at the same time. So without knowing some of that, I can't answer that, but it's a valid question that. What what normally happens in a large renovation or addition is either the main service is replaced, like, which would be the last thing we want to have happen because then we would have wasted some money. Or often there is a second service installed for whatever that addition or renovation is, which also isn't ideal. So there is some downside risk that we would be, that would be spending money now that we wouldn't have to later. But there's no, to my knowledge, at AMS, we have no plans for a major addition that would add, you know, thirty percent more electrical service to the building. At least there's been no conversation like that thus far.
Um, is this, so making some, making it bigger? Does, would that allow, let's pretend we did this at Wilkins. Would that allow the ability for our staff, you know, especially our classrooms, to use fans? Because right now they've been told they're not allowed to by the fire department. Would that allow that to happen?
I'm not sure I know what that's about. Fans in classroom are more often about extension cords and surge protectors than about the fan themselves. And that's, those are never things that are allowed in schools. Surge protectors and extension cords are a no-no. So I'm, I'm not sure how, you know, that that any size electrical service would would allow that to happen.
Okay. Beth, you're probably asking, will they be able to add additional outlets? That would probably be so they could run a fan, but I don't think that would be the case.
No. Yeah, no, it's just more of, because our, the staff was told last year, the year before, that they can't be using fans during the summer. You know, our kids typically would have been at school today in a really hot building and they can't use fans to circulate air and add the wind chill effect. So I was just wondering, like, oh, would this allow that to happen? But your answer is no.
A more likely consideration would be that when we update our HVAC systems at Amherst Middle School, that we at the very minimum add dehumidification to the entire building and at the maximum add air conditioning to at least parts or the whole building. And that would have significantly more electrical requirements, which again, might require the upgrade to the service. But the breaker, as long as we install the largest breaker we could possibly install, we wouldn't be necessarily shooting ourselves in the foot. The issue, because new HVAC systems are also more efficient than the ones we currently have as well. So there's probably a balance there. But again, that's, that's, I can only conject what that would be. So maybe that leads me to say, maybe it makes sense to wait a year or two until we get further down our Amherst School District Facilities Plan and we can have someone help us kind of guide us on that as well. Because I'm hearing the, it's a good question. We don't want to spend fifty grand now to find out. If we only spent sixty grand, we could have future-proofed ourselves. And instead, we have to now spend another sixty grand on top of the fifty, right?
Yeah.
That's all that off for just a little bit.
Yeah, that's kind of my thought on it. Sounds like the rest of the board kind of agrees. Josh?
All right. Yeah, I mean, I hear that. I guess I, I'm not, I wish there was a, in a simple and easy way to just, this was a simple part that we could just put away in a closet somewhere. Sounding like it's not. I still, I guess I would be open to this idea depending on where we land on other items. Like we said, we have higher priority items, which I think we probably do. So if we, you know, land yes on all of those, then that's fine. But if we feel like we've, you know, knocked out other things for various reasons and taken them away, then maybe we at least don't completely throw this out yet. But I certainly can, I'm happy to table it as we work our way down the list.
I would agree with Josh. And I think that if we decide, maybe we can get a quick assessment from La Valley Brenziger regarding potential size. I know they're early on in, well, they're not that early on in their assessment, so. But I would like to do that as well. So let's go through, you know, other items that we think are more important at the time and then see where we're at.
All right. Um, lockers. Michelle, do you want to fill the board in on the AMS lockers?
We have some, you know, ballpark based on a range of cost, twenty to thirty thousand for around one hundred and fifty to two hundred lockers. But I would need to get specific information in terms of the type of locker that we want in there. And my understanding is that the size of the lockers currently don't really meet the needs of the students. Is that a, are you agreeing with me or disagreeing with me?
Anecdotally, I have heard many times how small the lockers are and that they don't fit a bag. So yes, they are too small to fit the needs of current middle school students.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a matter of just replacing what's there and costing that out. It will take a little bit of, you know, time to determine the type of locker that's going to go in there and the cost. But we could ballpark around that range.
What is that range, Michelle? Because there's nothing in there now. I haven't seen a placeholder for that.
Yeah, there's no placeholder there. I was just saying that as a comparison, you know, for around one hundred and fifty to two hundred lockers, we'd be looking at two hundred, twenty to thirty thousand dollars. So again, depending on the specific locker and the actual number would drive that.
So I'll, I'll chime in that I'd like to start the support conversation of that. I think this issue is coming up, come up in our school board meetings before when we had a number of families and kids in attendance regarding the issue of not being able to play outside in the snow, I think specifically fifth graders at the time. Because part of that was they didn't have storage for everything they needed. People have talked about a number of different solutions. But when we toured the building with Bethany, the lockers were one of the biggest issues that she talked about. Half of them don't lock, the doors don't close. When they're open, it's a fire hazard. And so again, if they're not locking and closing, they're often open. So I'd like to start the conversation in support of the lockers.
We could certainly establish an amount up to, you know, if you said up to thirty thousand or up to forty thousand toward replacement of the lockers and then, you know, work in into that.
And I, probably a phased approach where we do some this year and then see where we're at after the assessment of the facilities by La Valley Brenziger and in terms of, you know, appropriate placement. And I know Bethany is a great resource. I'm sad she's not here because I'm sure she would have something to say about this.
Yeah, I guess I, I am in full support of upgrading these, changing them. But I, I know there was some talk, and I don't know if it was Christine at the last meeting, there was some worry about the lockers, new, new lockers might be too wide and cause a fire hazard or something like that. Is that, am I remembering incorrectly or was there some talk about that?
You're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we have an answer on whether that's the case or not?
Not at this time. Would have to look at what actually fits in the space and do that review to make sure that it meets all code requirements.
Terry?
Okay, sorry, it goes a little different when we have a shared screen. I am actually very much for this as well because I think that we have talked about, it takes facilities time, it's a safety issue for the kids daily. You know, we've, we've got things that don't open right, they've got sharp edges. They just are held together with, you know, chewing gum and fishing wire kind of thing. It's not good. So I would consider these a priority to at least get going, like maybe do one grade worth, you know, whatever, whatever amount we choose as the budget amount, you know, do as many as we can. But yeah, it will make sense to, to probably have to do it phased. I agree with Ellen on that.
Tom?
No, I guess I'm just a little, I guess, I don't know if disappointed is the right word, but I would have liked to have seen some sort of, you know, some sort of numbers that were in there. Twenty to thirty thousand at a hundred and fifty lockers. If you do thirty thousand, it's two hundred lockers. So, or it's two hundred dollars a piece. So that's considerably cheaper than I thought they were going to be. But I think I would have liked to have seen some numbers in there to, to get an idea as to what they might be looking at. Because I feel like we're just getting into a problem we have right now where if we approve this for this year and they decide, all right, we're going to get locker X. This is the only thing that fits and we're only going to be able to get fifty of them for thirty thousand dollars. That puts us into a big hole planning-wise. Sorry, I just got a cramp in my leg. Puts us in a big hole planning-wise for, for future years. So I guess that's my only hesitation is that we have no numbers to work on. So we're taking a leap of faith to see what this is going to be, not only for this year, but what it's going to lay out for the next four to five years and what we're going to be beholden to.
Um, so I definitely agree with some of it. One thought I have is although we might agree with one locker this time, you know, they might discontinue that shape and size or, you know, whatever, change it out. In the middle school right now, there's at least, I know of two different kinds of lockers. I think there's at least three different kinds of lockers, depending on the grade. So it's, and where things are so separated, I don't think it's the end of the world if we end up with something different for the different grades. Each grade might also have a different need and a different size and shape and space requirement. You know, I think our little ones might need more, you know, for boots and winter, you know, snow gear and stuff like that. Whereas our older kids, you know, theirs might be, they need to be bigger than they are now, but maybe they don't need that. Maybe they do. I don't know. But I don't think it's too bad if they look a little different as long as they're all better function.
Yeah, I guess I'm just more concerned about going into it blind as to what we're, you know, what they're asking for is my only thing. So I, if that were the case, I would tend to be a little more conservative this year. Maybe it's twenty thousand as opposed to thirty thousand. And then we see what happens after the twenty thousand, see what they get, see what their options are and then, and then go from there for future years. I just don't like jumping in blind to it, not knowing what, you know, what the end result is going to be without even really a ballpark in terms of what they need, what they're, what they can fit and then what the cost options are.
Michelle, looks like she's working diligently on something.
I was trying to see if I might be able to get a better sense of the number of lockers per grade. But we can certainly look at it, phase it in by grade. And the needs at one grade might not be exactly the same as, you know, in terms of size for, you know, another grade. So I'm also wondering, you know, do all of the students use a locker? I know at different grades that can be, students tend to use them less in some grades than others. I wasn't sure here how.
My sense is that they, they all use them or try to. I think sometimes they have, some of them end up with bags that are full of books all day long because their lockers are really not functional. But I think they, they would use them if they had functional lockers. I, again, anecdotally, there was a year where a locker did not work and it was a constant issue. So it was just in the backpack all the time. But my sense is that they would use them if, if available.
I also don't know in terms of the space available. When I had toured with Bethany quite some time ago and she was, you know, telling me about the lockers and the challenges with them and explaining that they are really too small. Once you expand the size of the lockers, then you can fit fewer, obviously, in that space. So we'd have to look at how we accommodate that as well, as to where additional lockers could go.
Um, so with numbers, for seventh and eighth graders, we have about a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty-ish each grade. And then fifth and sixth grade, I'd say right, I mean, this is today, is between a hundred and, there, it's right around a hundred and forty-ish kids. So just for that, just so you know that number. Um, okay, um.
So I mean, Beth, it seems like everybody's generally in some support. I understand Tom's concerns. I mean, could we, could we find a happy medium of twenty-five thousand this year? Move forward and then evaluate again in the future? And again, I mean, we're allocating twenty-five, but Bethany may say, well, it's really the sixth grade and they need new lockers and that's going to cost us fifteen and that's what we're going to do next, this year. And then, you know, they, they use the other money in the future or whatever. But I guess can we just find a happy medium and move forward?
I agree with Josh.
That's where I was, I was gonna, that sounds great. So yeah. We need, yeah, let's do, I think, the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Sorry, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, not a hundred. That was the number of.
Really nice lockers.
Wow, really. And a whole new building to put them in.
Um, yeah. Tom, you're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, a grade level. I did just realize we missed the folding walls, the replacement of the folding walls. They're twenty-five thousand dollars each. They're only recommending us replace one this year. That's why it says twenty thousand. We had a question on that last time.
Only one?
I guess there's one that's really bad.
So I mean. Twenty or twenty-five thousand?
Twenty.
Yeah, that, sorry, the removable walls are twenty thousand.
Do we want to, do we want to vote on the lockers? Do we have to vote? Or are we just, are we just saying yes to twenty-five?
I, I would appreciate that.
A vote?
Yeah.
You can vote on all of them at the end as one vote if you want. That's fine. But there just needs to be a board motion to spend an assigned fund balance.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So the foldable wall. My take on that, hearing the J F A C. Meeting the last time, those were the biggest number one item on the complaint list. So my sense is that whenever that renovation or whatever happens, that those I'm hoping are just going to be removed. So my sense is that this would be one wall that until that renovation happens, would provide some relief for those two classrooms that are probably most affected by this issue.
Makes sense.
Tom?
I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm judging by faces, like facial expressions. Terry, are you good with that?
Yeah, I think that, um, at least the one, if it's if it's made the list of their wow, we would really, really like this. And I think, again, it's a safety issue. So I think we obviously need to do more, but waiting on some of the others until we're sure exactly what we're doing with those spaces makes sense.
Um, walking through that space. There's, I think, maybe I know which one it is, and it's kind of falling off in a way. If it's not that one, then maybe they should have had more than one on the list.
Let's assume it is.
Yeah. So I'm assuming it's that one that it's actually like falling literally falling apart, not just is a pain in the butt. It's kind of falling apart, like falling off. So I think that makes sense. And I think as a safety issue, I think it's something that we need to improve.
Agree.
Um, okay. Michelle would, oh, you're turning them green. Never mind. So the
I think the glycol hot water system.
Roll and look at because there is no glycol hot water loop thing at AMS. I'm not seeing that on the list. I'm just asking everybody else because I don't see it. It could be missing somewhere.
AMS already has a glycol system. I happen to know that.
Okay, so we're not asking for it to be flushed.
That work was already done for AMS, my my belief.
Okay, so would you mind?
I'm sorry.
We can look at Wilkins.
Real quick, I just wanted to get Adam's take. There was some mention of the the upgrade on the B M S, which we basically said no to. But there was some, I had a question on efficiency upgrades on that. There was some talk that upgrading the B M S would actually save us money in the short term. So is that the case? And how much money is that? And before we completely disregard it, I just wanted to check in on that.
I appreciate that question. So a B M S. System almost always produces better efficiency because better controls equal better use and all of that. Any B M S. System is dependent on how skilled the operator is at using it and adjusting it. For example, when there's a snow day, someone should be in there lowering the temperature so that we're not heating a building that's not being used for the day. So that that's always going to be the case. I will also mention that Sohegan, the Sohegan Board last night or the night before, I don't know, one of these nights approved and upgraded their entire building management system for their H V A C. System. And we would work to ensure that they're the same system and that they're integrated and that it can be controlled from in the same format. So I think the I would say that it's likely that we would be able to save money with an upgraded B M S. Especially given our new facilities director, who is kind of a little bit of a, dare I say, a little bit of a dork when it comes to these systems and would jump right in and probably make sure that we did. So that's one that we could do now. We have several H V A C. Needs at the Amherst Middle School. So we could wait until we upgrade the H V A C. System to do that work as well. And I just got confirmation that, yes, I am a dork. So I just got a text indicated that I was correct about that. Thanks, Roger. But you could do this now or do it later. It's it's a, it's always a good investment to do to upgrade H V. H V. A C. Controls.
Um, is it something, you know, right now, there isn't really a plan, but, you know, there I think part of our concern is the changes that could potentially be happening over at AMS. Is it something that could, you know, if we were to spend the money now, is it something that can be adjusted to fit whatever ended up happening over there?
Well, so, and I'm not an expert in these systems, but I know a decent amount. So when you buy a B M S. System, you buy the system itself that is like the master controller, and then everything in the buildings are connected to it. So every thermostat in every classroom, every valve that opens or closes to let hot water, you know, go in and enter out. Every louver door that opens to the outside world, every single thing is a point that then connects that B M S. System and is controlled. And so I don't know, for thirty grand, I can tell you, it seems like we're only buying the front end like that that control system. This thirty grand is not what you would spend to replace all the points throughout the building because at Sohegan, we're spending, I think, a hundred and fifty grand to do that system over there where we are replacing those points. So if that's the case, we're just replacing the master control unit, then we would not be wasting money. If we were replacing all of the points, all the thermostats, all the things that control the valves, and then we upgrade all of those systems that have entirely different points in them down the road, that would be a waste of money. So does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, yes. Is it a situation where, um, so would we actually be able to see as much savings because we're not upgrading those points? But also, is there a risk that if we don't, if we can't get the work done for another five years, then the B M S. System that we're buying now would become obsolete for any new pieces that we need to add to it?
Fair question. Again, I'm not an expert. B M S. Systems are like fire alarms. They change slowly because they want to make sure that they have lots of compatibility with old and new stuff. So it's not highly likely that would become obsolete. There, most of the new systems are upgradable as well, kind of like, you know, I O S. On your iPhone that can be upgraded in real time, or the hardware doesn't have to be upgraded. So I don't want to promise we would save thirty grand in energy savings the first year by replacing the B M S. System. My guess is we would probably save some money and over a couple of years, we'd probably pay for itself. But that's borderline conjecture on my part.
Okay.
So I guess my my take on this is I lean towards supporting this at thirty thousand dollars if we're buying the front end of the machine without any real risk of, you know, having to replace that within the next five years. And then, you know, whatever happens to the back end of the building in any renovation would be suitable, would be would be able to connect with the with the updated B M S.
I agree.
Um,
also because I thought there were going to be more locks.
Um, I'm not completely sold on this yet. I think I'd rather kind of get through some of the items, some of the other items and see what we're spending in other areas before we before I make an opinion on, before I make it, before I change my mind on that, I guess, is really.
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the sake of expediency a little bit. What other boards have done that works pretty well is the board sets a dollar amount that they're comfortable with from the unassigned fund balance and spending, and then makes a priority list of the things that should go in that particular order. Number one, two, three, four, you know, down to twenty if you want. And then authorize us to go and do as many of those things as we can. Once we get hard numbers and hard bids and work down through the list. What can become difficult is when we go out and we find out that a folding wall actually costs twenty-seven thousand dollars, but the upgraded B M S. Only costs twelve thousand dollars. Well, we might end up spending more or less than the board anticipated. And it's good to have that upper limit of how much you authorize to us to expend and then your list of priorities. And that's, that's actually exactly what the Sohegan Board did the other night, which works pretty well.
Oh. I think that sounds like a phenomenal idea.
Yep, I would agree.
Um, okay. So Michelle, do you have the ability to?
Well, I do. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Because I I may have misunderstood from your prior meeting. I understood that everything that was in blue had already been approved by the board. So we are moving forward with those.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, those for us were easy yeses, which I think for us would be, we would consider top priorities. I thought on it. Because we were able to easily and unanimously say yes to those. How much, so with the items in blue, I can't see them all. Michelle, if so, if you don't mind scrolling, how much have we approved to be spent so far? I guess between the items in blue and our new two green items.
At that point. Going to include the boiler too.
Did we get confirmation that that forty thousand for the boiler is a replacement on that? I know that that was some, we were, there's a little ambiguity there at the last meeting.
The forty thousand is our best estimate for replacement. We are still awaiting responses from one or two vendors on that. We do have a response for repair, and that would be about twenty thousand for the repair.
Okay.
But we anticipate that the repair might extend the life of the boiler by about five years or so.
Okay. Michelle, can you show the second page or can you scroll down so we can, I can just see the rest of the totals that we have in there? Thank you.
It's hard. I'm not sure what you are able to see.
Yeah, I if you scroll up, I, yeah, it's a good point. I could see tables, I think, was the first thing that I could not see. Yeah, right there.
Yeah. So I can see down to line twenty-four right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so can I.
Um.
So the total potential expenditures on the board right now is four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That I, that's my calculation. That might be.
That's the grand, that would be the grand total if you chose to do everything.
Right. Now, I just, I did have a question because I'm not seeing, Beth had mentioned at the top that heat in AMS in the locker rooms, and I believe there was one other thing that roof and roof issues, those are not on the list anywhere. So those obviously would add to that four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. Do we know why those weren't on this list? Is it just? Michelle or Adam even?
I believe Michelle's list right here are only capital needs assessment lists, not things that came up in addition to what was in the plan C N A. That's, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, there are a couple of things that are on here that are on the C N A. List, but most of these items are unanticipated and not in the list.
Okay, so the roof isn't on there because we already have a plan to do it this coming year as part of the fund approved?
I would have to go back and look at the timing of that in the the capital needs assessment.
I don't think we had any projects coming up this year. I think the one fifty that we were doing for this facility study was covering, was the only thing that we had. And I don't think we had anything of substantial note until twenty twenty-four, if I remember correctly. I just did the math from what I have, and Michelle may can confirm this or correct me, but I have two hundred and six allocated between the blue, the pink boiler one, and then the two green ones we added tonight. I'll throw it out there that I would be comfortable going up to four hundred thousand. I think it would be nice for us to be able to return a million, a million plus to taxpayers, considering all the things that are going on now with job losses, unemployment and all of that. So I think I would be happy with a number of four hundred thousand because it would still give you a little bit of wiggle room to to do the heat in that locker room, to do the roof in AMS, and then to pick a few other projects on here that that might need fixing sooner rather than later. You know, than what we, or if something else comes in lower than what we have. So I'll throw that up there is is what I would be comfortable doing.
And I'm just going to remain a little nitpicky. We we had a question about the swing set, which is sitting right in front of us here at line fifteen.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's not that big of a chunk of change, but it's just kind of sitting unanswered.
Well, I think, Ellen, if we if we do like Adam had suggested and allocate a number, right now, we've only allocated about half of the four hundred thousand that I proposed. So you would have plenty of room if they if they determine that a swing set is important enough for them to get, they would have plenty of wiggle room to be able to do that. I think taking that that the direct approach of saying a dollars as opposed to each individual project will give them leeway to determine what truly is the most important thing. I just threw four hundred thousand out because that keeps us over a million going back to taxpayers, and then whatever else is on the plumbing project at the end, too.
And I would assume if we don't go up to four hundred, that'll get included in the one point, potentially one million.
Yeah, I would say so.
Yeah, I actually really
Comfortable with that.
About it versus trying to decide what my comfort level without the math being done.
I agree. And then, you know, in the in the case where you can get a deal on lockers, you know, that kind of a thing, I agree, trust administration to allocate it from here. Because we've dealt with the big issues.
Yeah. Terry?
Yeah, I like that approach. I think that giving some back is absolutely appropriate, especially considering what's in front of us. But I also think it would be irresponsible of us to not take care of some items when we can and not have to go ask for more money later. So use the resources that we have. So I think it's a nice compromise.
Yeah.
But I do think giving priority right now over which items we just don't want to do, even if we had the money, like, you know, we want to have more information or we want to wait and see. I think that going through this exercise was still important because we need to give priority to what gets done. And that way, if if they run out of whatever we earmark, then they have a set of priorities from us. I think it's still important.
Yeah, I think if we come up with a dollar amount, we can then go back and say no to a few things like we already have. But maybe there's something else we want to say absolutely no to. And then let them, you know, kind of go from there. Josh, what are your thoughts on this and including the number?
I mean, I think I'm generally, the number is generally reasonable, I guess. I'm trying to, it's hard. I'm sort of looking at my own printed copy here to see sort of what we would, you know, quote unquote, lose with that seventy-five thousand dollars. And essentially, you know, if we if we lose, if the lowest priority is replacing the switchgear, then that that covers that difference right away. So if if that's the bottom of the priority list, hey, if we end up with everything coming in lower and we can get the switchgear done too, great. But if that's, that's what we lose in the process of this decision making, I think that is reasonable to lose. So that's, I would agree with the four hundred, and I think we should go ahead and prioritize if there's any. I mean, they've already prioritized for us in a sense. So I don't know that we need to, you know, do a whole lot more. But there might be some things that we feel like should be moved up or down the priority list that has already been made.
Um, okay, so let's approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve to spend four hundred thousand dollars out of the unreserved fund balance to fix different facility, different facility needs throughout the district. So kind of a motion on that.
Make the motion.
Josh, can I have a second?
Second.
Tom, roll call, Josh?
Conklin, yes.
Tom.
You got there, yes.
Ellen?
Grigian, yes.
Terry?
Amy, yes.
Who's me? Yes. Okay. So, um, let's go through this list really quick. I know some people may have some strong opinions on a strong no on some things that we might need to discuss and then leave the rest up to the administration. Does that sound fair? Let's see if there's anything else on here that is a strong no, maybe with some of the feedback that we got or something like that, other than the items that we already strong node. And then we can go from there. Does that make sense? All right. In front of us, we have Clark and part of Wilkins. Tom, I'm going to target you on this one. I know you had some thoughts on the roof at Clark.
Yeah, it just, it's not failing yet. It's still a roof that's not failing. I think part of it is the, is the aesthetics on it. We talked in October with, why can't I think of his name?
John.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say Bruce for some reason. I kept coming in my head, John. Yes, we talked with him and it was, part of it was how it looked, but it wasn't failing. I just find that it's, you know, if it's a CNA thing that's not due till twenty thirty-three or twenty thirty-four, seems awfully early to redo that roof now to me, but I am very comfortable that if we gave them four hundred thousand, that if they wanted to do part of that roof now, half of it now, half of it in a future year, I'd be, you know, it's like giving somebody an allowance. They can, they can spend it how they deem, as long as it's responsible. I'm not dead set against it, you know, knowing that they have a certain amount of money to work with for the year. The roof at AMS that's failing would be more of a priority to me.
Yeah, I'd like to see that added to this and kind of put, I mean, there's, at AMS, there's, they have to put out trash cans to collect water inside the building every time it rains.
That's, that's an issue.
So I think that that should be on here and should be looked at before a lot of other things that haven't, I, especially like before this roof and things like that, you know, before the gear switches are replaced and stuff like that. I guess is really what my thought on it is. All right, does anybody else have any strong opinions about anything that was on this list?
I don't remember us approving every cafeteria table. It says in there that we, you know, we have twelve on there. I had it in my notes that we're going to do four new ones, but again, it's, you know, they have a budget to work with that they need to make it fit in there. And then the locker one, the lockers, I would like to see them find hard numbers before they do it again, because I don't like jumping into that one blind. And then I am personally against the breaker switches. If the one at Sohegan didn't blow, we wouldn't be having the conversation, so I don't feel like you just get a, if you have an engine that blows in your car or transmission that blows, you don't stave up and buy a second one and put it in your basement to hold on to in case it goes again. If it's a, you know, once in a lifetime thing, I'm not, I don't think that's a necessity. I think that's more of a PTSD expense. But again, that's just my opinion on those.
Yeah. I, you are correct about the cafeteria tables. That should only be four approved, Michelle? If you can put that note in.
But at this point, is that important? Because there, we're saying we're giving them, we're giving them four hundred thousand dollars.
Fair enough, good point.
And if they say, we want, we want all twelve tables and that takes priority over something else, then
Right.
we're sort of saying that's your call. Because I would leave that in the priority ranking where it is. I wouldn't move it up or down. So from there, it's the call of the administration, I think.
I will share that I know that Anna is considering a different style of table. She's interested in changing out what is there, so not replacing all of them would, would mean that we would have sort of a mishmash. We'd either have to stay with the exact same type of table that we have, or would be sort of mid-transition to something new.
Okay.
I think that's, that makes the point of why I think Adam's suggestion is a good one, and that this, this allows the people who have a better idea of table arrangement than we do to, to make the final call on that.
Yeah.
My, my caveat would be failing goes first and then health and safety goes second. So roofs that are leaking, boilers that are broken, those get exchanged out first, and then health and safety, air ducts, those get cleaned second, and then from there you go down the progression chart. That would be my guidance to them.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Okay. I think really taking all that into consideration, I think, is the great way. I think it really ends the discussion for the most part unless anybody else has a thought on it, which means we get to move over to board goals.
Can I just, Michelle, can I get a copy of this for our JFAC meeting?
I just want to confirm. So at this point, do we, do we take a vote, vote on the four hundred thousand? Do we already do that?
We did.
Okay. So I guess my only question then is to Adam that is this enough guidance for the various buildings to work with?
Yes, it is.
Great.
Okay.
And then we'll report back in August where we stand. It's likely we won't be finished with all of our projects, but we'll have, we'll make sure we report back and give very detailed feedback to the board on what we did.
Okay, thank you very much. So Michelle, if you want to stop sharing, board goals is our next discussion. And I am actually going to share. I think.
I can share the, what's in the packet if you can't.
Yeah, I have.
Share so that I could maybe actually do some edits if necessary, some quick live edits if we need to. I guess is where I was thinking. Bear with me for a moment. I see, let me just find, is it possible to share more than one document at a time, Adam?
I think you just have to make it fit in your screen, Beth. So if you were to look at, at two documents on your screen at one time, you'd have to arrange them size-wise to be able to do that, so we could reflect that.
Okay, so I'll share the whole screen then, because you can select certain documents that you want to share, so. I'm gonna just try real quick. Okay, so I'm gonna do that. Hold on a moment. All right, sorry, this is. I also have two screens, which is my problem. All right. So bear with me for a second while I get these over to where they need to go. Because Josh sent me some edits. Because it was easier than pointing out every single one of them as we went through, because there's more, some of them were formatting things, so. Okay, so I'm going to be looking off to the side simply because I'm looking at documents which are on a different screen. Okay, so Josh, this is on, over here. What was in the board packet is over on the right side of the screen, so. And of course, my stuff working. Okay. All right, so we went through, I asked everybody for some thoughts on their board goals and what we should include this year, and this is the culmination of everybody's thoughts. Josh had some thoughts on what was in there and kind of more of a formatting thing. And wording and adding some thoughts on it, so. I might, I think I'm, will probably focus a little bit more on this one, just so Josh's thoughts are out there a little bit easier for him, but we can, just to make it a little bit easier to compare, we have them both next to each other. We kind of listed them as in priority order. And, you know, what, or whether priority or what we're dealing with immediately. So of course, our COVID plan is right up at the top. And Josh has some, had some wording suggestions and things like that, as well as adding the perspective on it. So if everybody kind of wants to just like read through it, throw out some thoughts if there's anything missing, you know, on each section, just because it was, you know, everybody just kind of sent me their thoughts. I put them all together and nobody saw it until it hit the board packet. So if anybody has some items under here that you may not have seen, definitely feel free to raise your hand or whatever.
Can you make it bigger so that I, we can see all of Josh's comments in there? I can see his edits. I just can't see all the comments. We can, with his edits there, we can still see what was in the original.
Better.
Okay. All right, and I can even probably maybe figure out how to.
That's good. That's good, Beth, and you can see that really well.
It's really big for me, so I wasn't sure. Okay, so going through, we've got the COVID Plan 2020 and Beyond. Work with the Superintendent Task Force to create and analyze COVID-19 plans for the 2020 slash 2021 school year. Plan for future shutdowns by investigating lessons learned from current closures, so we can seamlessly move into remote learning when and if needed. Discuss the budget implications for schools, for normal school, full remote learning or combination thereof, and review our experiences for remote learning to determine if any can be applied to regular classroom settings. Does anybody have any strong feelings of something needs to be deleted or strong feelings of something that should be added?
So I'm going to say plan for future shutdowns. I just, that term is kind of abrasive, although true. I would go for plan for future closure by investigating lessons learned from our current situation or from the nineteen-twenty school year.
Not good?
Yeah, now you have closure twice, so you'd just say by investigating lessons learned from maybe nineteen-twenty school year.
Thank you. Adam, are you comfortable with the fact that we're calling it a closure?
If you want the technical legal term used by the federal government, it is a disruption.
Oh, better, like it.
Because I remember you very strongly.
Yes, closure is we are no longer running school. We are, we're doing remote learning because of a disruption to the school year.
Okay. Or how about? Okay. All right. Any other strong thoughts? On this? And feel free to just shout out because I, it's just easier and I can't see everybody, so. Okay. So moving on to facilities. Develop a comprehensive plan based on feedback from La Valley and the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. Review the best options presented by both groups. Thoroughly examine short and long-term tax impact. What the long-term, what the long-term goal is in terms of funding a capital reserve fund, so we are not looking at twenty-two thousand dollars in case of emergency, and then looking at how Oyster River funded their school might be a great way. Because of how, because of how they did it. I actually haven't looked at it, but there is a link on how they did it.
Yeah, I have to go back and reread some of the stuff in there, but it was just impressive that the tax impact wasn't going to be as drastic as a fifty or forty-five million dollar project would normally be. They had some huge amounts of money in their CRFs, and so they were going to be able to take a lot of that money and stop funding the CRF and be able to move it right over to bond payments, so it was already sort of in there to begin with. It was just, it was just really well thought out planning, and I'd like to see us be able to get to that point. Maybe not for this project necessarily, but for the future going forward, because it was, there was a lot of forethought in there that, you know, certainly hasn't been a priority or certainly hasn't been implemented here. So, but again, nothing is ever apples to apples, but it certainly shows you that it can be done to some capacity.
I'm looking at it right now, and I think that part of it was that they had money, and then also just the way that they did their bonds made a lot of sense, so that there wasn't like a balloon payment at any time, and it didn't have any spikes. They tried to even out, so they got a little creative with how they structured the debt so that it would be consistent. And that's right in line with what we've been saying, that we want to make a more consistent thing for our taxpayers as well. So they actually have a fantastic page. This link is awesome.
So we can definitely, you know, as, as we move forward this year, we can definitely take a look at those, you know, how they did it and see if there's any way to work it with what we have. But also, you know, like Terry said about not having balloon payments at any point and stuff.
Josh, I think Josh's, Josh's, how he rewrote that sentence is
Yeah. I was actually just about to say, Josh suggested breaking them out into two different things, so I can definitely, offline, I can go and
I don't know if this is important, but it's La Valley Brenzinger. So it's not just La Valley. I don't know, Adam, you could, is that a big deal, or should we be noting their full name or not their name at all?
You could, so they're technically, they're La Valley Brenzinger Professional Architects, LBPA, so you could use their initials or just say La Valley, that's fine too.
I vote initials.
LBPA is probably the best.
I promise I'll go back and check for spelling later. Okay, so Josh, I'll also carry this comment and break that out. So review the capital reserve fund and identify any missing items that should be included as part of the plan. You know, when we were just looking at the chart that Michelle had, there's a lot of things that weren't in there that maybe should be, especially like those gear shift things. You know, there's some things in there that maybe should be, and we should take a look at that. Yes, Josh. Yeah, well, and I'll, you know, as we clean this up, we'll make it.
You know, that was just me being a teacher nerd and
Don't ask a teacher to do edits if you don't want any.
It would have been worse if my wife did it, so. So what did I want to say? There was something about that. Oh, so I just wanted to be clear, we have a plan in place at this point to do the CRF every year now. Is that what this?
We're talking about two different things. A CNA, the capital needs assessment is what we should be referencing there, identifying missing items that should be on that. The CRF is how we pay for some of those items, and how we pay for the emergency fund, so that needs to be analyzed every year as well, but that is what we are funding with, was it three hundred thousand that's going in there from the Warren article this year?
You are correct. I did mean the CNA. Many initials, okay. But yeah, and should we have, you know, continued communication about the capital reserve fund as part of it, because we need to, we need to get approval on that every single year to fund it.
We definitely need to, because we, we still need to, whatever happens with our buildings, we have twenty-two thousand dollars in there right now, so whatever happens, new building, renovated building, buildings burned to the ground, we have to have money to take care of some of this stuff, so we need to, that has to be a priority every year going forward to it. And again, this goes back to the Oyster River model. They have a lot of money in there, so they're able to use some of that for shifting payments from into that fund over into the, to the bond payment. So I, I just, I hate to get off track on this, but so I understand that we, voters approved three hundred thousand to go into a capital reserve funds out of unreserved fund balance. Does that come out of the money that's left over from this year or next year?
No, we didn't. It wasn't out of the unreserved fund balance. It was just flat out.
Correct, thank you.
Except for Warren article.
Yeah.
That's right.
Each year, how we want to handle that. Next year, we could say we want it to come out of the unreserved.
That's right.
And it would, if we had, just so the board's clear, if we had had it worded that way, that it was coming out of the unreserved fund balance, it would come out of this one point four million dollars.
Correct.
So. All right. So. Okay, so, um. So I guess what I'm asking is, should we have an actual bullet about continued communication over the importance of the. Of funding the capital reserve fund, or is that just a given?
I think it should just be a given, I think it's gotta be a, and it's, it's, it's funding the capital reserve fund every, every year. Implementing that as part of our regular agenda.
Okay, um. Budget. Present another fiscally responsible budget while continuing to address class size goals.
No, another, agree with Josh.
Yep, agree.
Present a fis- a fiscally responsible budget.
Complete tuition agreement negotiations with Mount Vernon. Those will start in the fall, begin planning for a negotiations which will begin in the fall of 2021. So the, this last one really, it's going to be towards the end of, next, towards the end of next school year that we can start planning on. How we wanna, you know, what our goals are for it and stuff like that, but it's something we need to keep in mind. Strategic vision, uh, start time, we need to encourage the SAU committee. Present finalized plans to the fall. Identify the importance and impact of start time changes on our district. Work with community council to ensure understanding of broad impact to the whole community of potential start time changes. I'm not sure, Adam might need to chime in on this, but I'm not sure if that's really something that we can do, because that community council is South Higgin's. That'd be more of an SAU goal, not an Amherst goal. I, I don't know if we'd be overstepping our bounds, Adam, if we had a conversation with community council.
It is a community council, it is open to the community, intentionally so. They're a pretty thoughtful bunch, I think it might be important to have one of you show up and speak to that issue. Terry, do you agree, I know Terry's been on community council.
Yeah, I, I mean, I definitely try to. I've been serving on the council since before I've been serving on, on this board, so I always go in as community member Terry, not board member. However, I do say if there's something that I've learned from our board or that would affect our board, I always speak up. So it's something that I do on a regular basis anyway. And there is also, I'm a South Higan board member that is actually assigned to go to community council meetings. So I think that we have representation and I think that it does matter because it is important to know that there is a, a chain effect to some things, right? You know, it might not be a big deal to you, but it could very much be a big deal to someone else in that chain. So we do try to, to just make it clear how things affect each other.
My, my, my thought in adding it was not to, again, as I said at the SAU meeting, step on the autonomy of the community council, it was more to. Uh, I think as adults, we can have trouble sometimes having perspective how our decisions might affect other people. And so when, when there's issues that come up around start time, that is obviously going to affect the whole district. I feel like it would be good to have someone in the room to just express some thoughts about how it will. Decisions on a schedule will ultimately impact, um, the ability of the board to, to make certain decisions around start time.
Um.
And I think schedule there is definitely going to be coming back up for vote, we never actually made it to voting this year. It, it came on the agenda a little bit late and it was right in the middle of, of all of the COVID chaos. And we were trying to get the, um, transcript changes approved and that kind of. That took a lot more time than I think anyone planned, so it will be coming back up in the fall because it is integral to what we do. So, um, yeah, I'll definitely have a, a lot of opinions to share at that time. And just facts, facts to share.
With this one, um, I added that mainly, um, we need to decide as a board. Is this important enough for our students that we're willing, you know, we need to have a discussion because. You know, we don't, uh, we have the ability, we can decide amongst ourselves that. We're willing to make this decision even without, um, you know. Is, would it be a popular decision? We don't know, but it's something that we need to decide, we need to discuss. The, you know, for our districts, how important it is to us.
I don't know that we can do that best economically, I mean, if we're gonna have to, if we say we want our kids to start an hour and a half later. Regardless of what the high school does, then, I mean, that's gonna bring up a whole new set of buses, you're talking about an extra half million to three quarters of a million a year. I don't know that that would fly with taxpayers as much as we have the right to do that, I don't think that we. We have the right legally, but I don't think we have the right morally to do that.
So, I guess what I'm saying is we at least need to have the discussion, um, about it. Plus, high school students are not required to bus, to be bussed, so it doesn't 100% have to cost more money. Is it fair for the kids that don't have cars? It's a discussion that we, I feel that we should have and at least just, you know, throw up there.
The middle schoolers are on those buses, right? But Beth, I agree with you, so I don't think there's been a healthy discussion, maybe, and maybe there was before I came to the board. Because I think that ultimately the focus, the communication has been around how this benefits high schoolers or teens, preteens. But it's going to potentially adversely affect, and we've had that conversation about a potentially later day for, for our elementary students. And so, you know, and now we, we're having some feedback from the high school saying, we don't necessarily want this change. I'm not sure the elementary parents, teachers, school board would say, oh no, we definitely want it. So I think it's, it's a great idea to circle back and have that conversation again and, and almost kind of weigh in as a group. And maybe bring the feedback because Josh is new, although I know he covered it. When the communication was happening, but what does the population that our school board covers, how do they feel about the potential change? So I think it's an important thing to keep on there.
Okay. Um, and then, uh. Under strategic vision, provide feedback to the superintendent to support, um, the strategic vision from our side. I know Sue Higgin definitely gives you a lot of feedback. But this is about our, you know, there's some things, items in there for our kids too, so definitely including that. Communication, uh, we need more transparency, we need to identify what some of these areas of transparency are. There's been a couple of ideas that have been brought up in the community, but, um, we can always be more transparent. About so many things. Continue, you know, so it's also not only more transparency, but identifying what those. Where, what our priorities are of the first places that we should start being more transparent.
Just, just on, on that one, um, that specific one. It, it feels a little bit like when I tell my kids to be nicer to each other. It doesn't really have any real direction, so I don't know if we want to expand like, uh, more transparency around XYZ or sort of break that out a little bit. To have some more clarity around what we're actually talking about, because it feels a little like, it's a nice word and I agree, but. Do we know what?
Good job, yeah, I agree with Josh, more transparency, can, can we define that better?
Yep, um, yeah, I guess. I guess that's it is, I need, um, ideas from you guys about what that might be.
So can, can I ask your opinion when it comes to transparency, what does that mean to you? Because it's, for me, sometimes it becomes a little bit of a buzzword, um, so for some people it might mean communication. For other people, it might mean, um, getting out the communication before a meeting. So I'm not really, I'm not really clear what that means to you. And I think we've, I mean, since I've been on the board. I don't know if there's been other opportu- or opportunities when we could have been more transparent, so I'm kind of looking for that. Where you might mention it and I might go, oh, you're, you're right now, I understand. So I, I just don't get, I don't understand what, what that is.
Yeah, it's just more of things I've, you know, um, there are items that I've heard, um, in the community regarding. You know. Having more transparency, um, a lot of it's with the. Our spending or our, um. You know, the budget and things like that, you know, the budget planning process, you know, I think a lot of it ends up being communication. Um, and just making sure that communicate. All over the place.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a more transparent board that we can point to, um, what you guys have done in the last six months with your letters to the editor is tremendous. You guys also have extensive discussions at your board meetings where. Uh, it's very clear to the public that you guys haven't all gotten together and decided what you're going to do ahead of time. Which is the hallmark of bad transparency, you guys are having your meetings in public, debating and discussing things. I've been in school administration for about 20 years now and I've never been at a place where someone's not asking for more transparency from a school board. It is something that we should always strive for, but understand that no matter what we do, there will always be some who think we're not doing enough when it comes to transparency. So I think you guys should be lauded for your efforts to be, to remain open, to communicate well and consistently give. The public the benefit of seeing your debates and discussions, just my two cents.
So maybe continue to continue transparency or.
Continue transparency, uh, but again, that, that feels. I mean, it doesn't have to necessarily mean anything, but I mean, continue transparency with appropriate stakeholders. I mean, I think someone, I don't know if it was you, Beth, who, you know, started to talk about reaching out before meetings. But I think, you know, one way to potentially improve that transparency is when we know something is coming up, like we knew the volunteer meet stuff was coming up. You know, getting out, reaching out to the PTA in advance, if we know facility stuff that's gonna impact, the rec department is coming up, we reach out to Craig. But I don't know that that's transparency per se, that's just communication.
I really wonder if it's not, if it's really communication.
I think it is.
Well, it's under communication, what have you said, continue commitment to transparency and communication with all stakeholders?
Very well put.
And if you get tired of transparency, you can try translucence for a while.
But that's me in Andy photo in sunlight. I look like Casper.
So what was it again you said, Terry, commitment to transparency?
And cooperation with, um, all stakeholders. And open, or open cooperation, you know, communication, cooperation. Ca, 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 communication.
I think, can we just all say it like that from now on?
Yes.
Hey Josh, can you make up a poem about it?
About communication?
Yeah, just a whole thing.
Communication.
We'd like a little rap poem about all our goals.
I, I think that would quickly end my tenure as a board member if I wrote it out.
No. No, because we're gonna be the cool transparent board, okay?
Pretty sure if we have a rap about communications, it makes us not cool, but.
It's like dad jokes, board jokes.
Alright, so we need, uh, we definitely need to, um, continue with our monthly letters to the editor. I've heard feedback from the community, they actually look for it. Every month now and they're really happy with it, um.
With them going electronic and having an audience that might not all transfer with them.
Yeah.
Do we have another way that we can share, I mean, we could write it once, it's fun, but could we put it maybe in multiple venues?
And we put it on the SAU 40, the SAU 49, SAU 39 Facebook page? And then we could also encourage our community supporters, um, who have their own page as well, um, to share it out on there. Adam, is, is that something, an option?
We can use the SAU 39 page as long as you're not advocating for a political position of any kind. So for example, if the board wrote, um, we really want you to support Article 3 because we think it's best for our kids for these five reasons. That could not be on the SAU page, because that's.
Okay.
So, but if it was Article 3, as these five things, it raises $50,000 for plumbing, it raises $20,000 for this. You know, that you can do, so you have to be careful with. Using a public venue for political purposes.
Would that be true, Adam, if, and I, I hesitate a little to suggest this or venture into this realm, but would that be true if we had our own? Website, our own Facebook page, if we had an Amherst School District Board or Amherst School Board website that just shared information, it's purely informational?
Well, you can do that as well, but it doesn't absolve you from that requirement when you're speaking at a board. The best thing to do is the way you write your articles to be as factual as possible. And then Josh Conklin, private citizen, puts a comment underneath it saying, I fully support this and here's the five reasons why I support it.
Um, we do, since it was, since Adam just said it. We do actually as a board have to, now that we have. A board full of people that are very active in, um, on Facebook. We are, we have to be very careful about commenting on anything that is specifically board related, such as budget items, budget questions and things like that. As soon as. Three people comment on the same post, um, even if it's within subcomments and things like that, it actually becomes a meeting. So, not okay.
But only school related, right, so we can all comment about the lost dogs and stuff.
Correct, yes, it's just, it's anything about school board related. We can comment about, you know, the father-daughter dance, or, you know, sorry, the, um, daughter's choice dance or the son's choice. PTA activity, like those are school related, we can talk about the school plays and things like that, that's not an issue. It's anything that has been discussed at a board meeting or will be discussed at a board meeting. So, just so everybody's aware.
I think it would hopefully support the Amherst citizen too, if we were to create links. To our articles, because I think, you know, going digital will be a little more challenging, that transition for them. And we certainly want to continue to support that communication tool.
Agreed, Ellen, I, I think they're still a wonderful partner to us and I really appreciate the importance they put with, um, getting school information out. And giving us a forum, but I just want to make sure that we respect them while still making sure we find multiple ways to reach our taxpayers.
Yes.
You could just put links to citizens on social media.
This keyboard is not my typical keyboard, um, it's not friendly to me.
Ellen, are you gonna be in charge of tweeting it out?
I don't have a tweeter. So, nope, I'm not.
Do you mean a Twitter account, is that?
Yes. I'm not a, I'm not a tweeter. Or a Twitterer. And God, thank you, I'm so glad I'm not, because I just, I'd probably be at the. Bottom of my closet crying right now.
I guess Instagram too.
Napgram or Instaface, right?
I don't, I'm on Instagram, but I don't really know how to use it, I just go like this and then I get bored.
We will figure out how to, uh.
We, we can decide which, which avenues, I just wanted to be in there that we need to look at, at multiple venues.
I will say that Instagram is the place for people about 30 or under, roughly.
Yes, Facebook is the social media your parents have ruined.
Alright, so, we, those are examples, we can, as we, um. We can start with our next letter, we can figure out how to go about sharing. And if I, if we send the letter to Abby, she could, or Abby and I can talk about how to set it up and where to put them. Okay, thank you. So continue to encourage two-way communication with the community. Better communication with the SAU and the board, uh, sorry, in the building administration, so SAU meaning Adam, Michelle, et cetera. So SAU meaning Adam, Michelle, et cetera, um, in building administration. To help us reach board goals and strategic vision goals. Um, further streamline work and interaction with Mount Vernon, South Heagan Cooperative School Districts to continue acting as one district where possible. Um, and investigate the use of social media to disseminate news and updates. I think we just took care of that.
I, I feel like that one can be removed after we sort of put the link to, like, I feel like we're covering that a little bit. So.
Okay.
One question, sorry. Um, again, I just, I, I wonder about something like continue to encourage two-way communication with community. What does that look like? Do we, do we need to drill down on that to say, you know, we have a public, a whole meeting devoted to public comments once every quarter, or we have, you know, library nights with a board member and the superintendent? What, I mean, I just, at the end of the next year, or whenever we talk about these goals, how do we know that we succeeded?
I have a couple of things to, because I think I was at least one of the people that wrote this, if not the person. I think this involves outreach with different community groups, being available to talk with them, whether it's speaking at Alliance Club Meeting, or if it's just being at Alliance Club Meeting, or, or, um, you know, making ourselves available there. It's, uh, using the social media when we figure out the best way to do that, to encourage people to send questions to the board email, or to encourage them to, um, attend meetings or, or write in with questions or, or public comment for those meetings, or address questions to us prior to those meetings. It's sharing of that agenda so that they can see what's on there, so they know what we're going to be talking about. It's just as opposed to us dictating things, uh, and saying, you know, this is what we're doing, getting their feedback as well. Um, and I think, you know, one of the first things we'll be able to do that with, when we start to talk about it is the school start times. What do our parents really, um, feel about the school start time situation? Do they want it earlier? Do they want it later? Do they care either way if we move it for the high school kids or they fine with whatever happens? Are there other issues that they're concerned about? I think it's, you know, just making sure that we're thinking about getting feedback from them and really reaching out for it, because I think if we don't ask for it, we're going to get less than we would ideally want. I think we need to, and we're probably going to get less than we want anyway, but if we're not asking for it and we don't get any, then, you know, we can't be surprised by that.
Um, I think those are great, um, great points. Um, one thing we have to be careful of as board members is, um, speaking on behalf of the board. Um, without, um, you know, or not being the spokesperson of the board, without the board approving it ahead of time, um, kind of a thing. So if we have one person is the one that's going to be attending the Lions Club Meetings, if we have one person that is going to be doing this part of it, um, you know, just kind of coming to consensus beforehand.
Actually, yeah, I agree with that.
Um, you know, a lot of times the go-to spokesperson is the board chair. However, I don't have to hold it all, all the time. Um, you know, if, you know, somebody, you know, I know Josh and Tom both have, um, more connections and, uh, you know, you guys tend to be our spokesperson at PTA meetings, kind of a thing. That's fine. Um, you know, so those types of things, um, we just need to have discussions about that, um, as we work through that.
Well, but in the meantime, Beth, could we add a couple of bullets just to capture, get out to other groups when invited, or, you know, ask for an invitation? Just some of the items that, that we listed off so we can, so we can go back and go, what did we mean by this? Or we go, okay, here were some things we wanted to do more of. Did we actually do more of those things? Did we make ourselves available? Did we make it known that we were available? You know, just because we offer doesn't mean they're going to ask us. I, I have learned that as well. They don't always want you, but, uh, you know, it, it's a great opportunity. And I think that, um, specifically looking for those opportunities is something that you, you can't just kind of leave general, you have to go ask. And so, yeah, definitely, definitely putting some of those things in there would help us circle back at the end.
Yep.
And maybe just a general one of, of, of keep brainstorming for ways to engage.
Okay. Um.
Throughout the year.
If everybody can send me some groups that they know, um, or they can think of. Um, that way I don't have to do it right here, but if you can just send me a quick email of some groups that you might, um, that you know of, that we should reach out and ask, uh, to be put on, whether it's, you know, once a year, quarterly, whatever, um, please do so. Um, if everybody could think of at least one, more would be awesome.
Hey, I happen to know the incoming president of Junior Women's.
Me too.
You can save yourself some typing, call it AJWC.
Are there two Terrys or just one?
Uh, there's just one. I just get around.
Um, hey, um, I, in our JFAC communication meeting, we just compiled a very extensive list. Um, and so I'm not sure we would agree that those are places we need to go, but when we were thinking in terms of communication, um, for facilities, uh, we were thinking in terms of, and we made an exhaustive list. So I can get that from Shannon and forward, forward that over to you.
That would be awesome.
I would say that would be a good list.
And if Shannon's listening.
Um, Terry, can you say again, um, the, uh, continue to
actively look for opportunities?
Yeah.
And brainstorm ways to engage with the community. I just kind of want to make sure that we don't say, okay, did that move on? Like, we should always have it in the back of our minds as we're doing other things to go, oh, hey, we could fill in the blank and try this and see if that works.
Okay. Um, I read through these other ones. Any other thoughts?
I guess my, my only thought at this point is to ask, um, how do we hold ourselves accountable for these goals? Do we have a meeting, like, uh, I, as, as a new guy, is there a meeting at some point down the line where we say, yep, we did these, or does Adam tell us, well, you hit three of twenty and so therefore you're all fired? Like, I, where is the, where's the accountability on this, I guess is my question.
Um, I know last year, um, we didn't explicitly bring them up in meetings, but I did, um, refer back to them a couple of points throughout the year. For my, you know, for my own check on how we were doing. We weren't able to hit every single one of them as best as we could have. But we tried, like, we worked really hard, you know, we didn't get all class sizes down to exactly where we wanted them to be and things like that, but, you know, we worked towards a lot of them. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't expect, I mean, this is a pretty broad and extensive list and there are going to be things that outside of our control, we end up not being able to do. Um, but I guess I want to make sure that there's some, I, I would suggest that at some meeting in June or July or whenever next year or May, that we're sitting down and we're looking over this list and we're analyzing, we did this really well and we need to do this better, um, as we build out our goals for the following year. Yeah.
And I would agree to that, but I would encourage we do it much earlier. I think sort of, you know, a half-year check-in would be really great. And just going off what Josh said about the three to five and Adam's, Adam dismisses us all. Um, the truth is that Adam is hired to help us achieve these goals. So, um, so we can also review at some point, are we, um, reaching out to the appropriate people to support us in, in accomplishing these goals? So it seems like, uh, you know, I know December is quite a month, um, but it's kind of a halfway point-ish. And is it, okay, I have a question and I'm sure that this is a rule breaker. Is it ever possible that the group could just meet to discuss goals? If, or, does it have to be a meeting? Could it be coffee? Can we do that?
Not without violating RSA ninety-one A, so.
Okay, well, we don't want to do that. So how could we do it to not, without violating that? Is there, is there another avenue so that we could get together and discuss our board goals and whether we're achieving them or not, and then come back to our meeting with a report?
No.
Okay.
There is not.
I tried to get a cookout, you guys, I'm sorry.
What I would suggest perhaps is that in, in every single one of your, um, perhaps consent agendas, you include a board goals update and ask the chair or the vice chair to update this document with a quick note every month or every other month. And just say, here's what we did or here's what we didn't do, or even I can help with that. But just have it be something that's recurring as a part, because we, we pay attention to the things that are in front of us. And so if you wait till December, it'll be, what were our goals again?
Yep.
That's right. So maybe every month you just include this document and if Beth takes a note every month or so, great, right?
I like how Tom specifically did not look at the camera when you.
His head down, didn't hear that.
I've seen the vice chair assume that responsibility.
I'm taking notes, that's, so I remember these things.
You are, did you, you wrote that down?
Yes.
So Beth, that is the definition of transparency if we do it every month.
I like that. Um.
You don't even need to discuss it. It's, it's part of the consent agenda. Here's our update, we just review it and then we've adopted it as part of our monthly meeting.
Right.
Right.
I like that.
Yep. I just had, Michelle's going to hate me, but I just had to, uh, remember for something I had wanted or had thought about putting under the budget. Last year we put in, um, the budget section that we wanted to start our budget season earlier than we had in the past. Um, because before we didn't really start until late October. Um, so we put a hard date. I think Michelle's going to kill me. I'd like to do that again.
She's not going to kill you. She started the budget process earlier today with meeting with the Ways and Means Committee. So she's, she's in full budget mode already.
Yeah, and we haven't had a full cycle yet. This is, she's, now she's going to put on her cape and start flying.
And I think with that too, we wanted to have an extra meeting in October to be able to go over some of the, um, to have an extra touch base in there. So we weren't trying to cram it and have a five-hour meeting in October. We wanted to have a couple of them.
Yes.
So what I, what I was, um, planning to do is to put together a draft of the calendar. And then I would like to have an initial meeting with the Chair of Ways and Means and Chair of the Board and the moderator, just to review the calendar kind of from a thirty-thousand-foot view. And then set the meetings for the subcommittee, the timeframe for the subcommittee meetings right in that calendar.
Okay. Oh, yeah, because we had talked about that.
Right.
That's a really big challenge. So I love that idea that everybody has a little bit of notice on that.
That way when folks are signing up for subcommittees, you already know the dates that you would need to be available for, rather than the reverse, which makes it hard for folks to participate.
Yes, that's great. Love it.
Um. Okay, I'm going to clean this whole thing up, so I will clean up that section, but October one. Michelle, can we have the budget by October one?
Um, let me, let me reevaluate the calendar, um, and we'll work toward that date.
Or.
So I'm going to reserve judgment on that until I have the calendar all together, but I'll, I'll strive for that date, given that's the, the goal.
Okay.
We had it around that time this year, Michelle. It wasn't much later than that if we did.
Yeah, I think we got it by October fifteenth, um, or some, or no. Wasn't the fifteen.
I don't have that date in my head.
But, yeah, it wasn't far off. Um, but we can also, what we could do is look at what our October meeting dates are. Uh, yeah, like what are actual board meeting dates? Because I think really our goal is to get it Friday before our board meeting, if we're meeting on Mondays, kind of a thing. Type of thing. So I'll put in October one as a placeholder, um, and then we can take a look and.
Also, my meeting today with Ways and Means was a debriefing of last year's process. And so we had some great conversation and, um, set some parameters for the upcoming year. Uh, if folks have feedback that you'd like to share with me, um, I'd be interested in hearing your, the thoughts around that. Not necessarily, you know, right now, but you can give that some thought and if you have some comments, feel free to reach out to me.
Okay. Alright, um. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm over and started thinking. Um, alright, so does, are there any other notes on this entire document? Um, I'll go through, make the changes we talked about. Um, actually do some edits, spell checking, all that fun stuff, and then send it over to everybody. For a final look at, and then I'll also take a look and see how we can make notes, um, on different sections, even if it's maybe just adding comments um, on the sides, um, about things as we move along to include in the consent agenda, because I like that idea. So, anything else? Okay. Thank. Yeah, last public comment of the night. We have one. Maybe, oh, no, we have more. Um, oh, wow, look at everybody stuck around. Um, do we have any other public comments? I'm going to stop sharing so I can actually see people raise their hand. Alright, I'm not seeing any raised hands. Nope. Okay, so do we have a non-public tonight, Adam?
Maybe. Uh, I have five teachers to nominate tonight, and so I'll place those five teachers into nomination in public. And if the board has any questions about any of the candidates, we'll need to go into non-public to discuss them.
Um, okay.
Alright, so I've got five teachers to nominate tonight. Um, first is Alita Brown, eighth grade teacher at Amherst Middle School. Um, she, uh, as I mentioned, will be grade eight science. Deborah McGinty is a special education teacher at Amherst Middle School. Um, Sarah Nickel is the part-time physical education teacher at Clark Wilkins. Rebecca Carl is the part-time music teacher at Clark Wilkins. And Linda Brennick, who will be the school nurse at Clark Wilkins, replacing Danny, Nancy Penicetti. So I'll place all five of those into nomination. And as a reminder, um, the board needs to take a motion to elect those five people and either approve or not approve my nomination.
Um, if there's any questions, we need to move into non-public, correct, Adam?
Not if they're budget, if they're about the salary or any, you know, anything that could affect the reputation of those people.
Um.
Would it need to be non-public just to ask if there's anything especially noteworthy about anybody you'd like us to know about?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Well, I really shouldn't comment about anybody who's not been already approved by the board. Because if we then vote someone down, uh, that could be a, a challenge for us. I will tell you that I've interviewed all five of them, uh, as have Christine and the building administrators, and they are a strong bunch, bunch of people. And they're all replacing people in, in current positions, so obviously no new position of any kind.
Okay.
Okay. So. Um. So as long as nobody has, does anybody have any questions that are allowed to be discussed in public? Okay, does anybody have a question that we need to move into non-public for? No. Okay, can I take a motion to elect these teachers? As Adam mentioned, that Adam, Josh, can I have a second?
I got a second.
Ellen? Sorry, Terry. Roll call, Tom.
Did you want to have a second?
It's fine. I'm good.
Hey.
Gothier, yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Josh?
Conklin, yes.
Terry?
Him, yes.
Who's my yes? Okay. Um, that will be it for tonight. Um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. It is eight twenty-nine.
Have a good night, everybody.